All right, so very nice to see everybody here on the dais. And I know we've got an interesting committee of the whole ahead of us here. And so what I would like to do is call this committee of the whole meeting to order for the Kalamazoo City Commission from Monday, July 1st, 2024. And the first order of business is roll call. Good Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Cooney, Commissioner Decker, Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Commissioners, may I please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Cooney and Commissioner Decker?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel, supported by Vice Mayor Hess. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. We are lucky to have our chief operations officer with us this evening, Laura Lamb. And COO Lamb, do we have any communications?
I'll save my communications for the 7 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, great communications at our business meeting at 7:00. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just as a reminder, the public comment time at our committee of the whole meeting is 2 minutes, unlike our regular business meeting where the public comment time is 3 minutes. So please come forward and you can come right up to the dais and sign in afterwards if you would like. Now is an opportunity for our public comments.
Sorry. Not going to get it all out in 2 minutes, but I'm going to try. Hi, my name is Tina. I live in Kalamazoo. I live on Lake Street in the low line floodplain area, which is also a poor neighborhood. So my concern is that the resources for the flooding will be used around the event center and not for the known flooding low-income areas like South Town, Portage Creek, Crosstown Ponds. Your storm drains flood out the streets and back up the sewers. This happens every time we flood in the poor neighborhoods and not like Arcadia Creek, where there are $300,000 one-bedroom condos. Why, the low-income homeowners, they have to work 2 to 3 jobs just to survive flooding. We are the city of Kalamazoo, not the downtown of Kalamazoo. Poor neighborhoods deserve dry streets as much as wealthy downtown. I have came here for 7 years, and I have repeatedly spoke about the flooding issues and saving natural spaces in flooding areas. And I have watched as funds are stirred away from poor neighborhoods like mine and watch resources as they are spent over the line in wealthy areas like downtown. I have seen a lot of wasted money. If there's any integrity left in this commission, we will prioritize the resources and save and to solve the problem in south side of town, South Town neighborhood first and not quietly around your new event center. Because we've been flooding forever. We can't afford to keep doing this. And the more land you take away, the more we flood. That's why I'm here. I seen something about the flooding. And I was hoping and praying that you were finally going to do something about the storm drains in my neighborhood that flood out the streets. You can see that from the pictures I brought you at the last city commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of this public comment period for our committee of the whole meeting? If so, come forward. You'll have 2 minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city.
Jack 122. Okay, I'm number 3, but I'm Harmonica Dan, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49008. And I picked the wrong harmonica today, but let me just start out by doing this. That's summertime, and I think that's appropriate for the weather we're having. Let me just, in the minute and 33 seconds that I have remaining, say that I believe that Kalamazoo should be in Central Standard Time to align it with the nearest big city, which is Chicago. There's no reason why Kalamazoo can't be an island in the Eastern Standard Time. This is actually part of Chicagoland, believe it or not. We have Amtrak here. You can take Amtrak from Chicago to Kalamazoo and get here in approximately 1 hour. I'm sorry, 2 hours. And then the second thing is, I think Kalamazoo should also resist switching to daylight savings time. I think it should just be fixed without switching to daylight savings time in the spring and then, what is it, spring, fall behind springhead or something like that. There's no reason why Kalamazoo can't be similar to Gary, Indiana, which doesn't switch time zones or this to daylight savings time or something. And that also further should align it with the nearest big city, which is where I hail from, Chicago, Illinois. So that's about all I have to say. I hope that the city council takes this recommendation seriously and makes it happen. Okay?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to take advantage of the public comment period for the committee of the whole meeting? Seeing no one, then I will turn it over to COO Lamb.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Director Baker. He's going to be giving us a presentation tonight on the flood mitigation.
Nice to have you here.
Your Honor, COO Lamb, City Commissioners, City Attorney. Thank you for giving us this presentation, this opportunity for this presentation tonight. We're going to go over just a broad scope and strategy with respect to flood events in Kalamazoo. We're going to talk about flood locations and types, scope and magnitude of flood events, current and recent projects, and then some flood mitigation alternatives that we are looking at and we are working towards, future projects. So there's going to be a number of projects listed out. Some of those are funded and some of those are not currently funded at the moment. As I walk through this presentation, I want to keep in mind just some ground rules for everybody, that I will be using some rather technical terminology, and I'll have specific flooding criteria for each different type of flood. That's important because as we go for projects, we have to align the project with the right solution for the type of flooding that does occur. So I recognize that as a community, when we flood, you know, our, things are wet, right? And things are wet for a whole variety of reasons, and I understand that. So I just want to make sure I'm relaying that, that I understand the situations that our residents go through and the peril that they go through. That being said, we've got very specific criteria to solve problems, and those are based on engineering application. So with that, you know, I figured it would be pretty informal. If there's something that doesn't make any sense, or you have a question on it, just stop me on that slide. I'd be happy to go into it. And of course, as always, we'll, you know, have questions at the end. So just talk about some specific flood locations and types. I'm going to be talking today about riverine flooding. That's flooding that comes from a river, flooding that comes from a stream, that's flooding that comes from a moving body of water. Non-tidal backwater flooding, that means that we're not dealing with oceans, so there's no oceans around here. That's the non-tidal terminology. And then backwater means that we've got different sources of water that create hydraulic forces on each other. So you'll hear us talking about non-tidal backwater flooding. That's essentially water that's getting backed up from another water body. A third category of flooding is non-riverine, so that means it's not from the river, urban flooding. And this has to do with rain that's coming down faster than what the storm sewer system can take it away. And then our fourth category of flooding, or where folks experience flooding, is groundwater infiltration. And so each one of these types of flood experiences has different project solutions for them. And that's why we've separated these out. We will bring these all back together and talk about them as a kind of a dynamic event to show how these all interact with each other to create the flooding that we experience in Kalamazoo. So talking about riverine flooding, I'm going to talk and highlight about Kalamazoo River. Where we're at here in Kalamazoo, we have what's about 1,000 square miles of watershed above us. So that river is flowing to Kalamazoo, and when it gets here to Kalamazoo, it's already a fully developed river. It already has a lot of runoff from sources that are not Kalamazoo. That's important in terms of how floods are propagated and how flow is propagated in the river system before it gets to Kalamazoo. During a flood event, there is about 15 to 20 billion gallons of water more than what we already deal with. And so dealing with that, you know, where do we put 20 billion gallons of water is a pretty big job during flood events. When we're talking about the Kalamazoo River, we're usually looking at 5 days or so from a runoff event to where we have our peak river elevation or our peak crest. And then the river channel through Kalamazoo, it's important that we note this, is it's insufficient to handle flood volumes. So if we think of the river as a conduit or like a pipe, if the river is a pipe and it has to flow a certain amount of water, the pipe is too small and it can't flow the amount of water that it needs to flow. When this happens during flood events, when the Kalamazoo River, which is our pipe, so to speak, when it can't handle those flows, it discharges or over, it spills out into the low-line areas, which also include Portage Creek. Portage Creek then experiences backwater, which we talked about, that non-tidal backwater flooding, where Portage Creek is now backing up as well. And then we also have, within all that, groundwater that is high and can contribute to chronic basement flooding in older homes in low-line areas. This is a hydrograph. This is just a chart. This is from our gauge station in Comstock on the Kalamazoo River. This shows us the height of the water surface elevation, and we go from where we were normally, around 4 feet, up to our peak event, almost 12 feet. So during this flood event, the Kalamazoo River, the water, the water surface of the Kalamazoo River raised 8 vertical feet during that flood event. And you see that from where we were on the left side of the chart, kind of normal, normal operating conditions, the river's under normal flow, from that time to the peak crest was about 5 days. And then it takes many more than that, you know, about 12 days for it to fully subside. This concept is, we're going to talk about this again, but this is important to understand, is that when the river can't get through the channel, that channel's insufficient to handle the flow, it raises in height. And so if you think of the river as a pipe again, and the pipe is insufficient to handle the flow, that flow is going somewhere and it's going vertically up. Now, we all know that as that river goes up vertically, a few feet, it goes out in a width of several hundred feet, several thousand feet, and covers a floodplain area. Talking about another riverine system, this is actually Portage Creek. A little bit of a compare and contrast. Portage Creek is 47 square miles. If you remember back to the previous slide, Kalamazoo River is 100 square miles. So there's a smaller watershed that Portage Creek is drawing from. Another unique event within the Portage Creek watershed is that that creek exists nearly entirely within a populated area. Portage Creek exists nearly entirely within the city of Kalamazoo and the city of Portage and Oshimaw Township. And if you look at these areas in the city of Kalamazoo, city of Portage, Oshimaw Township, it's all developed. And by developed, we're talking about impervious areas, paved parking lots, shopping malls, that sort of thing. There's no natural wetlands. If there is, there's very small amounts of them, and that's something that we're going to be talking about in the future slides with Portage Creek. Portage Creek has some of those same challenges that Kalamazoo River does, in that during flood events or peak runoff events, the channel is insufficient to handle the flow. So the cross-sectional area of the channel of Portage Creek is not large enough to handle big flow events, big runoff events. Here's an example from just the other night. This was the Monday night for Tuesday morning, just after Father's Day a few weeks ago here. You can see that we were sitting about 2 foot in elevation of Portage Creek, and then within a very short amount of time, within about an hour and 15 minutes, we jumped up to nearly 6 feet, 5.67 feet. So that's a very quick change in elevation. That was a very strong thunderstorm that came through about midnight, dumped 3 to 4 inches of rainfall in about a 1-hour period in a big area, 47 square miles, that is nearly entirely impervious due to development that is occurring in city of Kalamazoo, city of Portage, and Oshimaw over the last 124 years, give or take. I'm talking now about non-tidal backwater flooding. A little bit of a goofy title on that, just saying it's non-tidal means we're not talking about oceans, but we are talking about backwater flooding, so it's the same concept in that Kalamazoo River goes high because its channel's insufficient to carry the flow. And when that goes high, that slide I showed you where Kalamazoo River went up to 8 feet, that water's got to go somewhere. So it, when it goes up 8 foot in height, so it goes up to 12 foot, it backfeeds up the Portage Creek. And that can feed up into the Crosstown Ponds and Exel Creek, and so all that area becomes kind of a backwater flooding. We see that in storm events where we have the rainfall that comes in quickly, Portage Creek floods due to channel capacity deficiency, and then later, sometimes up to 5 days later, we have Kalamazoo River flood, and then that backwater floods everything else. Shifting gears here, talking about non-riverine urban flooding, again, little bit of a complex name. Non-riverine means we're not talking about a river, so we're not talking about Kalamazoo River, we're not talking about Portage Creek, we're not talking about Exel Creek. We're just talking about storm drainage, the storm drain network at an elevation that's not impacted by those other sources. And so we have a direct relationship to localized rainfall. Usually, we're talking about an area within 100 acres, but you can have these areas of 100 acres be next to each other. So you could have a bigger area, but each area is a subset of about 100 acres. One thing to keep in mind is usually the land area is flat or it's somewhat bold, so it's completely reliant on that storm sewer network to convey the runoff. So you could have storm sewer systems that are not meeting current design standards in some of our hillier neighborhoods. Those are neighborhoods that are on hills, but that water just runs off the hills. So even if those storm drains were plugged or had capacity deficiencies in those hill neighborhoods, it's still just going to run off. So with these areas that we have a concern with non-riverine urban flooding, again, those are relatively flat areas of land that are completely reliant on that storm drainage system. And then when we have those big storm events, that could overwhelm the design of those systems. So the end result, whether it's a non-riverine flooding scenario, a non-tidal backwater flooding scenario, or a riverine flooding scenario, we've got water over the streets, water in basements, water in homes, and when you're standing outside and need deep water, doesn't really matter which one of these is occurring, you just know that you're getting flooded. Groundwater infiltration is another item that we experienced quite a bit here in Kalamazoo. That's due to high groundwater elevations, meaning the water table is really high. We have a lot of homes that have sump pumps, and the sump pumps may or may not be able to keep up with infiltration rates in the springtime or other areas when we have high runoff occurring, you know, high rates of rain. Different foundation types may allow more water in than other types. And again, during flood events, we have really high water infiltration rates. So you can imagine what groundwater is doing when the water is 4 foot above the ground. So the groundwater really has a lot of pressure on it at that point. This image that I've got there in front of you on the slide where it shows areas of green, those are hills. So that's high areas where the groundwater is at least 10 feet or more below ground. The areas of kind of orange and yellow are areas where groundwater is anywhere from 3 to 4 foot below ground. And then the red areas are where groundwater is 2 foot or less below ground. So you can imagine, if you look at this kind of red area here, and we recognize that a basement, most basements are anywhere from 6 to 8 feet deep. If you've got an 8-foot-deep basement, but groundwater is just 2 foot below the surface, you've got about 6 foot of water pressure on your basement that's going to find cracks and block and rock and things like that and infiltrate in your home. So this is one of those challenges of building in Kalamazoo. This doesn't necessarily go away. There's not a solution to really pump this. This is, you know, really something that has to be kind of mitigated on the individual property level for, you know, resources and things like that. So to talk through a typical flood event, I'm going to kind of bring home all those different scenarios that we talked about, and just kind of talk you through a typical event for folks that would, you know, live in the Portage Creek floodplain. This is the floodplain that we selected to talk about. So this would be, you know, in the area around Portage Creek as it runs through Kalamazoo from like Reed Street north to, would include Reed Street, Stockbridge, Lake Street, Crosstown Parkway, Vine Street, Jasper Street, Dunton, all the way out to where it meets the Kalamazoo River. So we have some sort of runoff event, heavy rainfall, heavy rain on snow, snow melting on frozen ground, plus heavy rain. Portage Creek channel insufficient to handle high flow, so that chart that shows you where we went from 2 foot up to 6 foot in the Portage Creek, that's going to overwhelm the creek itself. So we'll have low-line areas around Portage Creek are going to get, you know, that first wave of that flood event. We also have usually, up to 5 days later, Kalamazoo River is also going to experience a flood due to channel capacity deficiency. That's going to then create backwater, it's going to come back up Portage Creek, and then also inundate those properties around it. And then high groundwater is occurring through all that as well. One thing that we did want to kind of point out during this flood scenario is that these flood scenarios have been occurring in Kalamazoo even before Kalamazoo was developed to the way that we know it today. You know, Kalamazoo River floods were occurring and have been documented on the record in 1866, in 1867, and in 1904. Now, we were a village then, you know, we were a community and developed, certainly we were, but we weren't developed south of where, you know, Vine and Dunton, so specifically Forest Street, Wall Street, that area. That was about the south limit of where houses were at in the city. And a big area was floodplain area. If you look at some old maps, like the 1874 atlas that shows you kind of aerial view of the city, that was all originally floodplain. So shifting gears here, talk about, okay, so what can we do about this? What have we been doing about this and where can we go in the future? So we're going to talk, I'm just going to kind of bullet point a number of projects here, and then we'll kind of go through and show you where we're at on some of those. So we've got flood inundation mapping project, it's a joint project with the city of Kalamazoo, the U.S. Geological Survey, National Weather Service, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and of course, the city. Crosstown Pond and Culvert dredging project that was completed in 2020 that was funded by FFE. We have the EPA Kalamazoo River Superfund, projects that are ongoing throughout the city. We also have the EPA Allied OU-1 project. That's a really impactful project for us that's going to help bring in some additional wetland that wasn't part of the creek system in the past. We have a Reed Street project, a wetland improvement, storm sewer offlining project. And then we also have several storm sewer capacity improvement projects that we've been demonstrating in non-riverine urban flooding areas that are, have proven to be quite successful. And then we're going to talk some long-term flood mitigation alternatives and strategies. So one of the first projects that we started back, this project started in 2019 and is functionally completed this time, although we still have some GIS products that will still be coming out. So this looked at, coordinated several gauge stations along the Kalamazoo River. So if you weren't aware of it, you can go to USGS gauge stations on the Kalamazoo River. Those are free and open to the public. You can get to them online, the Comstock Gauge, the Reed Street Gauge, there's 2 gauges out in, the 1 gauge out in Oshimaw and 1 gauge on Oakland Drive that's coming into the city. Those are all sponsored by the city of Kalamazoo, so we fund those through the water department. We also have linked up groundwater monitoring with those as well so that we can kind of manage water resources within and understand how much of our annual precipitation is runoff and how much of our annual precipitation goes back into groundwater. And so we monitor all this kind of stuff and we can kind of do mass balance on it. So getting back to this project, we were able to complete a 2D dimensional hydraulic or HECRAAS model of the river system and the creek system, understanding those unique dynamics between the Kalamazoo River flood events and Portage Creek flood events and backwater events. That model, that computer model has been very informative in our designs as we create design alternatives for long-term flood mitigation. And then it's set the stage for a lot of collaborative work that's been occurring between the city and Army Corps of Engineers as we look and plan future projects. Another project that was completed in 2020 was the dredging of Crosstown Ponds. Over 11,000 cubic yards of material were removed from Pond Number 1 and the culvert that conveys flow from the ponds along the north side of the Public Safety Crosstown Headquarters Facility and then discharges over near the youth development center. That's a lot of material. 11,000 cubic yards is a lot of material. So a cubic yard is a cube that's about 3 foot in all directions, and so we've got 11,000 of those of, you know, sand material and everything else. So the ponds, to the extent that we understand the design intent was to help as an attenuation buffer between high-flow events of Portage Creek and runoff events of Exel Creek. So we've noticed that when Portage Creek goes up above 200 CFS, it starts to fill up the ponds. And so those ponds are kind of like a spring that will absorb some of that hydraulic energy when we have those storms that come in really quick. The Portage Creek will get more flow than it can take. So again, we've got a storm event that creates runoff that would, you know, create flows that are in excess of channel capacity, so there's a channel capacity deficiency. The extra flow actually backflows into the ponds, and you can see that we've been out there, we've actually visualized flow changing directions and going back into the ponds and then the levels of the ponds going up, and then once the storm passes, the ponds, you know, draining back down. That works for flows in the 200 to 300 CFS range, and from a rainfall perspective, that works on rainfalls of 1 to 2 inches per 24 hours. Not 4 inches in 1 hour, 1 to 2 inches in 24 hours. And you see here, there's a, here's a, here's a chart, very different events. We've had some events speaking over 300 CFS. This chart shows, you know, a period of storm activity in July and June of 2022. And you can see during those events, although flow was going into Crosstown Ponds, Crosstown Ponds were rising in, you know, into a bank full position and then draining back out again, that all occurred without flooding the roadway. So that, you know, that project, the FFE-funded project really did a lot of great work to restore the baseline design capacity of those Crosstown Ponds. Again, another thing that we're looking at with that Crosstown Pond dredging project and storm events, so we've got, these are the annual peak storm events or annual peak runoff events of Portage Creek. So we've got, these are the annual peak storm events or annual peak runoff events of Portage Creek. And this goes all the way from 1952 to all, to, you know, present day. And if you look kind of where the data is starting to go, you can see that the, the trend is rising. So we are seeing an annual increase in peak runoff events. So the Crosstown Ponds were built and designed 1940 through 1942. If you look at where our peak events were back then, um, you know, we didn't have a, a peak above 300 um, until well after the 1950s. And as we go forward in time through, you know, 1970s through 1980s, you can see more peaks above 300. And then when you get to where we're at today in 2024, you see most, all of our peak events are well above 300. Most of our peak events are above 400 CFS. And so you see that we're getting more runoff now than we ever have in the past. So we're getting uh, in, annual increases in runoff. So this is something that uh, from a resiliency and design perspective, we've got to start to change um, how we do our, our designs. And that's something that we'll be uh, working into future projects as well. Some other projects, uh, the EPA dredging super fund uh, PCB removal all along the, the Kalamazoo River. This is helping to restore channel capacity uh, to, it's still a deficient capacity, but it, it is helping to restore uh, channel capacity. So and through their design and implementation of where they're taking sediment out, you know, they're recognizing uh, you know, channel deficiencies that, that are occurring. And so when I talk about channel deficiencies, I'm talking about a channel, uh, a river channel that is, you know, over time filling itself in. Uh, that's what rivers do. And if there's not a programmatic dredging program in place or velocities aren't maintained above a certain um, uh, a certain velocity in feet per second, then those channels can slowly deposit over time. We also had a, a very tragic event that occurred uh, when a lot of sediment was released into the Kalamazoo River from a dam failure uh, or a planned maintenance activity and a, a, a failure of sediment, if you will. Uh, all that sediment uh, made its way through the river. Uh, a lot of that sediment has worked its way past. A lot of that sediment was also cleaned up by the EPA in the areas where the EPA did their work. Um, because the EPA had to get below that sediment to get the sediment that they had to take out. So that work is helping. Um, it's, it's, doesn't solve everything, but it is moving us in the right direction. Another big win for uh, Portage Creek and floodplain is the construction of seven new acres of floodplain on the Portage Creek. Um, and this is occurring above Kalamazoo, so upstream of Kalamazoo, um, over there in Alcott. And so when we are up elevation, we can store water in a wetland and it's not flooding folks or impacting folks. So if you look at uh, like a cross-section of, of Kalamazoo, uh, and you looked at where Alcott uh, would be at uh, or Cork Street or Alcott would be at, that's relatively high compared to Reed and Stockbridge and Lake and Crosstown where that, those areas are relatively low. So with the ability to store seven acres of stream flow um, during high flow up in these areas, we can mitigate and reduce and attenuate uh, those peak events as, as they come into Kalamazoo. So what would that look like? Essentially, the uh, the creek as it's built around that area that's currently under construction between Cork and Alcott, uh, we were designed to where a normal bank flow uh, would be around 200 CFS. And then as we approached 300 CFS, it would start to push in to seven acres of wetland. And then after that storm event is done, it could drain out and make its way out of the wetland. There'd be some pools and things like that to um, support the wildlife and everything. But that's something that could occur storm after storm after storm and that wetland could help to attenuate those flows, to help minimize uh, what happens, you know, down here um, in lower reaches of Portage Creek. So, you know, seven acres, uh, you know, some folks might look at that as a small number, that it's, you know, we're not, uh, this doesn't really, this is not really impactful. But if you look at seven acres on the ground um, and start putting homes in it, there's a lot of homes that could be benefited by seven acres of wetland upstream that could take the flow um, during a flood event. So that's, we're extremely excited about this project. Um, and this is planned into the construction that we're currently engaged with uh, with EPA at that site. Another project, this is a, a little bit smaller, but still very impactful, about four and a half acres on Reed Court. This is a Reed Court uh, wetland improvements and storm sewer offlining project. Uh, this project seeks to offline storm sewer. So when I say offline, the storm sewer would normally discharge the Portage Creek. That's getting offline. It's going to get infiltrated. Uh, it's going to create some passive recreation areas for the community. So there's a community benefit uh, with this as, as well. And then uh, again, we're improving the wetlands so that when they're, we go into flood stage, we've got these areas that are designed to flood and are planned to flood and they're planned to flood at a lower elevation than what impacts uh, the city itself. And uh, this is a project that we're uh, working on right now. So just to familiarize yourself with what we're looking at, uh, that wall that you see would be uh, Reed Court, kind of looking towards the east. And then the top of that wall would be, you know, Reed Court where that is. And so this image right now is kind of looking north uh, towards the, the flow as the creek flows uh, north towards the city. Uh, this image would be you're, you're standing on Reed Court uh, and looking west across the creek. And you see uh, we've got uh, potentially some opportunities for folks for recreation um, as well as, as some walking trails uh, throughout that area. Some other projects that we've been doing that we've had a, a lot of success on uh, recently is the non-riverine urban flooding uh, project. So we've got a, a, a new resilient design and storm sewer, one of our areas that uh, you know, really, we're really proud of that's been working really well is at Church, so Church Street at Hopkins. And, and Hopkins does a little jog where, where it hits Church Street. And so this area, this project area really goes from Proudie to Hopkins on Church Street. Includes all aspects of those intersections. And so we've got um, each, each inlet is a, is a big double inlet. So it goes into these two inlets that you see here. Those inlets are then connected underground with like a bypass pipe. So if one of the inlets gets plugged, it will automatically bypass to the other inlet. And then that's connected to the system and then it's got, you know, a cleanout and everything in, like that. So we've installed um, I think six pairs of these uh, that you see. So there's six renditions of this image that you see here in front of you. Uh, and we, we installed uh, all this work, I believe in 2022 um, after a non-riverine uh, urban storm flood event created a lot of flooding concerns up in this area. And since the installation of this, we've been uh, very happy with the amount of flow that this is able to convey. Um, and so it, you know, really helps to change that design and update those designs to be able to handle large amounts of flow. Some other, you know, projects that we've got, uh, our flood mitigation plan um, is a plan put together between the city and the county submitted for uh, that goes to FEMA and that talks about all of our kind of big picture projects that uh, we want to plan into the future. And so we had three really big projects in that. Uh, we've got a flood control mitigation project for Portage Creek floodplain, um, a north side storms uh, bypass sewer uh, to deal with uh, capacity uh, deficiencies of the storm sewer up in that area. And then a water and wastewater generator project to put all the stations on, on generators throughout the entire system. Uh, so just kind of talk through what these projects are and then I'll come back to the plan itself. So this, the, the plan includes three of these projects and there's a, you know, web link to get to the plan. This is an aerial view. We're, we're pretty high up. We're pretty zoomed out. Uh, but you see, this is a, a pretty large floodplain area. Every one of those red boxes represents a structure uh, that we're looking to save from, from future flooding. Uh, so what does this project seek to do? It seeks to, under high flow, bypass Portage Creek flows into a tunnel and then uh, convey that via a pump system back into Kalamazoo River. And so that would deal with Portage Creek when it's in a capacity deficiency state. Uh, it would bypass those flows via that tunnel system and then that would lift that flow up into Kalamazoo River. Uh, that would also have a closure complex. So when the Kalamazoo River gets high, the closure complex would shut and not allow the Kalamazoo River uh, to backfeed in. So that's a, that's a big project. We show here the, the red line is, would be like the tunnel that the creek would bypass into during high flow. And then you have those pump stations and that closure project uh, closure um, facility up there as well. The north side storm water relief project, uh, this area shows you, when you see that red line and the yellow halo around it, that's showing you that um, under resilient design considerations, uh, those storm sewers are undersized to handle the, the peak flow events. And so we looked at a few different alternatives of um, you know, ways to create and, and, and fix that with bigger sewer systems. So these are the difference between these two. So anytime you see the red uh, dot with the, the halo around it, uh, that's a uh, a deficiency in terms of flow conveyance. And then this image shows you that we've, that's all fixed. And to get to that image, uh, we've proposed a, you know, a large uh, solution, either a forest main or a large uh, conduit. Uh, you know, we looked at um, a large drain in the north side that would be, you know, like a big box culvert to help drain all those drains and, and convey that to the river. So next steps, you know, wh- where do we go from here? How do we accelerate, you know, some of these big projects? We talked about that hazard mitigation program that uh, the city and the county worked together on. Uh, we just received, actually today, we just received notice that our uh, hazard mitigation plan has been approved by FEMA. Uh, so that means that those projects that are identified in there, those projects that I just showed you uh, were deemed, you know, technically good to go, so to speak, you know, from FEMA. Now, they're not funded at this point. Uh, but they are kind of through that first step of uh, you know, being technically uh, sufficient and the benefit cost analysis were accepted. So they all have BCA's with them that show the investment is, is worth it. It, it uh, does what the, it does the job that it intends to do. Um, you know, so strategies, next steps, where to go from here? You know, we really want to talk about um, seeking community support for storm water and flood control projects. Uh, these projects may not always be the most glamorous, but they are um, certainly needed uh, to support our everyday life, transportation, commerce and around City of Kalamazoo. Uh, we're still working with the Army Corps of Engineers to receive kind of a, a further uh, technical evaluation of that uh, bypass tunnel project that, that I showed you. Uh, we've got to identify some funding and, and then really quantify some environmental concerns. Uh, so that's something that we haven't gone into that yet. Um, but that's something that we want to look at. Things like um, you know, how do we drop uh, 400 CFS of creek flow into a tunnel and protect fish and wildlife and that sort of thing? And, and we're positive that there are engineering solutions to that. We've just got to spend some, some time and resources to, to look at that. And then, you know, we also want to continue to look at uh, developing long-term strategy for sustainable storm water and flood control utility. You know, these projects, even if they were funded, um, are not going to stand on their own for long-term. They're going to need operations and maintenance, things like a bypass tunnel system is going to have to be maintained. Pump stations to pump the entire creek are going to have to work even when the power is out. So there's going to have to be some long-term strategy to, to keep those systems flowing, so to speak. Uh, and with that, that's uh, about all I got and happy to take any questions.
Uh, I just want to thank you again. Uh, I really feel like I have just completed a undergraduate class in storm water management and what contributes to it in, in a way that's actually understandable. So I appreciate that once again. Questions? Commissioners for Director Baker. Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
That was really great and I understood some of it, but it was a lot, but you did a great job laying it out. So from time to time, we hear from a young lady that comes here and talks about South Town. And I've talked to you about that and, and I get the impression that that's in a ball.
Mm-hmm.
And that the only way to mitigate that would be a huge projects would cost about $30 million. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. I, I would um, perhaps if I may correct you on the dollar figure, our current estimates uh, prior to COVID were around $120 million.
$120 million.
Uh, and so that's, that's very likely a $250 million project um, today. But uh, we're still working on that and, and we're not going to give up. And that, that's one of the, the things that I've advanced a slide to show you kind of what I'm talking about. This whole area of gray is the area that we're talking about. This whole area of gray um, is the area that we really spent a lot of time talking about tonight where we get uh, flooding from Portage Creek. It's high in groundwater, so it's already kind of wet. Folks already are dealing with wet basements. And we also get flooding from Kalamazoo River and it all runs downhill and it always finds its spot. Uh, one thing that's uh, particular to note is that when Kalamazoo River is in flood elevation, the surface of that water is higher than the ground elevation down here in this neighborhood. So flow is going to flow backwards through the storm sewers. Flow is going to flow backwards down uh, Portage Creek. And flow is going to kind of well up down in this neighborhood. Um, and it's going to continue to do that until we have some way to stop flow from Kalamazoo River, like a closure complex, some way to pump Portage Creek up and over or to bypass it with a tunnel system. Um, our models show that this can work, can be successful. There's project like, there's projects like this that are working today all across the United States, in Texas, in New Orleans, and in other places where you'll deal with water uh, elevation, water systems at different elevations that react with each other. So there are systems in place like this all throughout uh, the United States. So this isn't reinventing the wheel. It's just bringing that wheel of solutions here to Kalamazoo.
For a quarter of a billion dollars. Um, so, okay, granted that's long-term kind of a thing, are there other things that we could do in the meantime? That we hear about, are the sewers cleaned out? Are there things? What about that?
Well, yeah, you know, talking about that, so these wetland projects between the four and a half acres and the seven acres, you know, together to add almost 12, you know, 11 and a half acres, almost 12 acres, that really helps. So, you know, if we add 12 acres of wetland upstream, we're essentially going to mitigate 12 acres in this gray area. So that's a step in the, in the right direction. Um, in terms of the storm sewers, this, and, and I'm talking about this specific area.
Yeah.
The storm sewers aren't a contributing factor to the flooding. They're, they're a hole in the dam, so to speak. So if the storm sewer goes, it goes either way, whatever way gravity is going. So when Kalamazoo River is higher than the ground elevation down in this area, it's going to flow backwards through that storm sewer. Uh, it, and it does that. We see that. You can see during storm events, water is actually shooting vertically out of the storm sewers because we've got water. And I showed you, I'm going to just flip back several slides to show you, Portage Creek in, in an hour and 15 minutes, it went from two feet to nearly six feet. So it raised, I mean, it raised four feet, four feet in height. And if you go out and you look at where some of these storm sewers are, that storm sewer, the road itself, you go to Lake Street, I mean, you're right down, almost even with the creek. You can get out, out of your car, walk on the bridge, walk over by uh, you know, Kick Pool over there and up John Park. There's a, there's a trail that walks right along there. And just imagine, look at the creek and then go, okay, four feet up, this is where it's going to be. And then go look at where that storm sewer grate is. It's going to come out of that storm sewer grate. Unfortunately, we can't make this, the sewers only flow the way we want to. The sewers are always going to flow via gravity and that's hydraulics.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other questions? Commissioner? Yep, Vice Mayor Hess.
Thanks for the class, Director Baker. A few things. You know, you had told me before about this, this project, uh, the $250 million project. And uh, we were waiting, you said we were waiting for information from the Army Corps of Engineers. That hasn't come back yet in terms of how much we're going to be dumping downstream.
Correct. So that, that's the, the big technical determination that we really need to understand. If we do this project, are we making flooding worse for other folks that live in Kalamazoo? Or other folks that live in Comstock or other folks that live in parchment? And Michigan has some really unique law under flood control and flood mitigation that other states don't necessarily have. So under Michigan law, we have to prove that we're not going to impact flooding in those other areas by solving our own flooding problem. And we really need Army Corps of Engineer help with that because they've got all the access to all that data and they can run all those different models together. One of those models that we built together uh, with them with that project that we started to fund in, in 2019. Uh, we have been getting assistance at the federal level from this. Uh, we, we were uh, reached out by uh, We, we were reached out by both Senator Sabanow's office and Representative Hochschild's office to look at a bipartisan bill that would put a funding appropriation together to look at Kalamazoo River. We're also working with City of Battle Creek. They've got some things they want to do in terms of studying flood control measures. They have flood control in place. However, it's not very environmentally sensitive. It was done many decades ago when those considerations weren't, weren't in play. So they, they want to take a look at some things too. So there's a, you know, kind of working together. There's, you know, really a focus to, you know, be able to look at Kalamazoo River watersheds, you know, both in Calhoun and Kalamazoo County and, and see what work could be done. And maybe there's another alternative that we haven't discussed that could, you know, fix it without the use of tunnels and pumping.
Right. Okay, cool. So, so we're not paying for that study. The Army Corps of Engineer, we don't, do we pay the Army Corps of Engineers?
So there's all kinds of relationships in terms of local funding that, that would probably come out later. If we landed on a project, you know, it'd be beyond the scope of this presentation to go into all those different alternatives. But, you know, we would be going after, you know, many different funding opportunities when, when those came around. And depending on what source you go after, the local share amount does vary. So I would imagine there would be some amount of local share to do, to do a project like this.
Cool. Thank you. One more. So tonight, we heard more about Portage Creek and Kalamazoo River. And we just received this large rage grant, raise grant for, raise grant? Is that what it was?
Protect.
Protect grant for the Arcadia Creek. So in a nutshell, can you talk about like, what, what areas that's going to help and how we're going to use that $28 million?
Yeah, sure. You know, so I left that area off tonight's presentation, you know, essentially because we have a solution, we're implementing the solution. So it's not as critical to talk about at a community level or an area that, you know, we, we don't have that solution fully scoped out yet and it's not in the pipeline, so to speak, to get built. That project area for Arcadia Creek is much simpler to fix because it is at a high elevation. All we have to do is build a pipe and let gravity do the rest. We've got the elevation to do so. We've got the room, the Arcadia Creek as it sits today, as it stops at Westonage is deep enough, it's low enough, it's big enough. So all we have to do is connect a big enough pipe to it and go west. We plan to go west and intercept all the existing route through many different phases and, and Oliver intercepting the last piece of that network. And there's a, you know, really resilient design that incorporates the flood conveyance measures that we need with some environmental sustainability measures as well as connection to transportation. So having a walking trail on that as well. And so, you know, the engineers have worked out, you know, some, some great concepts in engineering to really look at that. And simply put, that's an easy project. It's not nearly as complex as what we have here. We, you've heard me talk about a bowl several times, that the area of Crosstown Ponds are kind of the lowest part of that bowl. And once water's at the bottom of the bowl, it's really hard to get it back out. So we've got to get it to, we've got to stop it from getting in and we've got to bypass it, you know, when it's, when it's coming down around. The Arcadia Creek project, we just build a bigger pipe.
There you go. So thank you for all of that and really express our gratitude to all the engineers that are working on all this flood mitigation. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Commissioner Prudell?
Hey, Director Baker. Thanks for being here tonight. Later tonight on regular agenda item three, there's a first reading of ordinance to amend this Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter 29, and that's about flood plain management. I was just wondering if you could, you know, share a little bit about that and give us some background on that. I know it has to do with FEMA and how they redefine the flood plain every so often. I believe the last time that we had that done was 2010.
Sure. That action, proposed action tonight is ordinance revision. So it would come in, in two meetings. Your first meeting tonight is a, is a first reading. That just updates the flood plain maps that FEMA produces on a routine basis. The last set, I believe, was 2010. And so our ordinance has to cite those maps and, and, you know, by reference and so that they can be enforced, you know, here locally in Kalamazoo. And there's building code protections and things like that that different departments use with respect to those flood plain maps. So there's, there's not, not really a lot of controversial subject matter with those flood plain maps. They, they do change over time. They change over time based on changes in precipitation, changes in weather patterns and things like, things like that. But when we compare them back, there's not a lot of movement. In fact, and I'll probably talk about it at seven, just as a brief introduction, on our public GIS webpage. So you can Google City Kalamazoo GIS, you know, select the city GIS web link, go into GIS, go into our layers, go into flood plain, and then you have the ability to select the older legacy flood plain or the new 2024 flood plain. So you can select them both at the same time and see, you know, where something bleeds through, so to speak. Or you can look at them independently. Another feature that we have on our public GIS site is the ability to look at some flood imagery from a flight that we flew in 2018 during the record flood event. So you can look at actual flood imagery from 2018. You can turn that on and then you can look at legacy flood plain and you can look at 2024 flood plain. And you can go parcel by parcel or you can zoom in or zoom out, you know, wherever, wherever you want to go. So all the information's available to folks. I encourage developers, builders, homeowners, look at that stuff. Before you have a project, please go look at that. Look at what's your, you know, property, where your property sits, what some of these flood impacts look like. Look at your property in 2018 when we had the record flood event and look at it under that 2024 flood plain map. But, you know, this work that we're talking about here tonight at the community, the whole, this is the work that's going to solve the flood mitigation challenges in the future. The flood plain maps, it's just kind of what it is. It's, it's what it is where it is, you know, today.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask the question, just so the public knew, you know, that we've got.
Certainly. Yeah.
Talking about two flood plain type things tonight and just so people can connect the dots. The other thing as well, this might not be something that you're expecting me to ask, but are there, are things, are there things that tend to be on the more affordable side that you could recommend to homeowners if they're facing a lot of groundwater intrusion type issues? Because we see that a lot in my day job, especially a lot of homes on Northside and Edison where, you know, they have water just literally boiling up from their, from their basement and oftentimes foundation cracks and whatnot. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's a great point. I, I think to, to answer that, we have to understand that there's all different types of foundation types. You know, there's, there's Michigan basements, there's rubble wall, block wall, there's block, cut, cut block, you know, rubble stone, actual CMU block, poured wall. There's all different types of basement foundations. You know, usually when we talk to folks, we want to, you know, recommend that they call, you know, a basement waterproofing professional or a licensed builder to come in, take a look and look at your foundation, look at what type of foundation you have and, you know, ways to, to, you know, prevent water from, from, from coming in. There, there is some risk and this is why we want you to contact a builder, is that depending on your foundation type, if you were to stop all the leaks, you could have that pressure build up and blow your whole wall out. So, you know, something that we certainly want homeowners to reach out to professionals so they don't make a problem worse.
Yeah, that, the flood plain mapping is pretty, pretty useful for the GIS to see if you sit in it. But even just tools, like if you know you're in the flood plains, oftentimes when you're having HVAC appliances installed, you can have those elevated, you know, even just things like your gutters and downspouts, we find helps a lot with people as well. I mean, it all contributes, so.
Yeah. And, and we've worked with property owners. There was a, a doctor that had a doctor's office along Crosstown on John Street. And, and they were actually able to fill their entire basement in with concrete so that, you know, it doesn't leak anymore. It's just a solid, you know, six foot thick slab of concrete. And then all these utilities, you know, the furnace and, and water heater and all that kind of stuff were brought up into a utility room in the upper floor. So again, working with a builder can really help connect those dots for you and maybe present some solutions that homeowners may not have been thinking about conventionally.
Even sump pumps, you know, you think about like a large rain event like we just had. Well, if your power goes out and you don't have like battery backup sump pumps, well, you just got a bunch of rain. The power just went out. Can imagine what happens in your basement. So, yeah. Anyways, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prudell. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, seeing none, thank you so much for your time and attention on this matter and present, presentation to us this evening. Now, back to COO Lamb.
Nothing further for me today, until seven.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, it's an opportunity for Commissioner comments. Just a reminder, there will also be an opportunity at our business meeting that starts in less than an hour. Any Commissioner comments for the community of the whole this evening? Seeing none, then this meeting is adjourned. And once again, anyone who's interested, our regular business meeting starts at seven o'clock this evening. Thank you.